All right, so we'll move on to the next bill, which is 20-0627, and that's the Baltimore City Fire Department Reporting Requirements for the purpose of requiring the Fire Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department to report annually certain information to the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore, and requiring the report to be made available on the department's website. This resolution was introduced on October the 5th. I was the sponsor of the bill based on some of the hearings that we've held for the last year in reference to making sure that we are aware of what was going on in the Fire Department, and making sure that we could make sure that the Fire Department was grown in the right aspects. And so, what we've discovered was some great information, but we want to further make sure that we're transparent and honest throughout the, throughout all agencies in Baltimore City, especially when we notice that there are some things that can be done better. And so, what we're asking for is to make sure that we report out annually of what happens in the Fire Department, since we're struggling with recruiting and training. And so, hopefully, this process will bring us on in the right track of making sure that we are the best Fire Department ever. So, I am going to move right along. We have Councilwoman Danielle McCray. We also have Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark and Councilman Bill Henry. Councilman Robert Stokes is absent. We have from the Mayor's Office Matt Stegman and Nina Themelis. And from the Law Department, we've had Hillary Rulie. From the City Council President's Office, we have Kayla Young. And I don't think I missed anyone, no. Oh, and we, I'm sorry, we have finance, sorry Mara James. And so, if we don't, do I have any questions or concerns from anyone that's on that committee? No, okay, we'll keep moving. If we want to go to the Law Department, Hillary Rulie, do you have anything?
We stand by our report, Madam Chair. We approve the bill and the amendments that you would introduce.
Perfect. Chief Ford, do you have anything to add to the bill?
Yes, ma'am, I have a few minor objections, and I don't know if I call them objections so much. So, I'm concerned about a few things, and it's okay, can I point them out? Okay, all right. Dealing with the high school program is inevitable. There, we're going to go through some changes in that program. I really don't know what it's going to look like after with this. We haven't been able to really sit down and work with the school system on it, because they are so deep in dealing with the new way of teaching for them during the COVID environment. So, we hadn't, even though I met with the superintendent myself, I don't know what this is going to look like when it's all been said and done. So, I'd like to at least sit down and talk about what's with, under A, what five, six, and seven would look like, what those reporting numbers would look like. And all of it, I really don't have any big issues with it, because it, one of the things that we had been working on toward anyway is doing an annual report. So, this resembles more of an annual report of what we planned on doing anyway, and it's going to be published. And I think January 31st is actually a good time to do it. So, we're looking forward to that. Another thing I'm a little concerned about is under B, other reporting requirements, to the number of uniformed personnel who were suspended with pay, number who were suspended without pay. Also, sorry about that. Also, the number of discharge is filed against uniformed personnel. And I guess I'm not as worried about number four as I am two and three, because the normal practice, and this is a customary thing to put in, in annual reports, I think it ought to just read disciplinary processing or something like that, where we just put in the number of disciplinary actions that were processed through our HR department, if that's possible. And also, on number seven, under the number of community-based town hall meetings conducted. We don't necessarily conduct town hall meetings, we attend them and participate. So, can we use the word attended instead of conducted? And under Section 3, where the reporting is to start of 2021. Now, it's going to sound like I'm pushing it down, pushing down the road, but I think 2022 would be better primarily because, for several reasons. Whenever you start reporting new information or doing new reporting, you need to give yourself a runway for doing it. We won't even have a whole year, we'll have two or three months. And we have two or three months in an environment where I've actually downsized a lot of my administrative staff. I can still do it, and I will, but the numbers are not going to be as reflective and as much of a 360 perspective as we probably would want to be, because we're going to do an annual report, it's going to be a lot more extensive than this too. So, that's all, but if, I'm just giving you a perspective that the 2022, 2021 numbers will be, will not be as extensive because of COVID and the staffing I have, and having to report it, pull it together now within like three or four months.
Thank you. I hear, I always, I prefer us to actually start it at 2021. That way, we still have a base, instead of kicking the can further down the road. So, I understand what you're saying, but I prefer to still just keep the date. Mostly, the information is already there. So, I'm going to push back on that one to just go ahead and keep this thing, to keep this thing, to keep it.
Yeah, I understand having a line demarcation, and I totally agree with that. The only thing I'm concerned about is that line demarcation may, may not show a true line, but we will move forward with it, no problem. But I'd like to be on the record right now explaining our issues that may occur.
Perfect, not a problem. The other one that you talked about with using swapping out just words, I'm okay with conducted instead of attend, so that's okay.
The word is attended rather than conducted.
Got it. And I think that one would be fine. Can you go back though to the first one?
Sure.
567.
We're asking about the number of high school students who received EMT certifications from the department, high school program, the number of high school students, because I don't know what this is going to look like after COVID-19 and after we have a chance to reconvene again with the school system. I can't tell you exactly, because we've been, we've included having conversations with BCCC on how we're going to move forward with this and other agencies, even another, well, we're looking at a program even with older people now, because we, now that we want, we'd like to expand, but we don't know where we're going to be at with the high school program altogether. So, I'd hate to put something down saying we're reporting, we'll do it, but it's inevitable it's going to go through changes.
Yeah, I think that's okay too, because I think we're all in this unsure state of what's going to happen, but at least we will have done our due diligence by at least reporting. So, if there's nothing to report, because we're not in schools and they're not meeting, I think that's okay to just say that.
And/or, and/or being frank, the high school program does not exist in the way it exists now.
Right.
Okay.
I think that's why we want to know, and so that will make, the council members will be aware of that, and hopefully, there will be, you know, some folks who will want to take it on. So, we are recruiting and making sure that we are getting some of our high schools prepared to take on this career, so at least they will get aware of it, and we'll have somebody pushing for it. But if we're not aware of it, you know, it kind of, as we saw, it just will fall in the background.
I just, this is, that's another one, I just wanted to be on the record stating that some of the issues that I've got, that I'm not expecting to concur, I know are going to occur over the next couple of years. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect. Does any other council members have any questions?
Sorry, ma'am.
Have anything?
Madam Chair, just a technical question of the amendments that you and Chief Ford just agreed to, are they going to be prepared for a future committee hearing, or are they going to be floor amendments that we'll do on Monday, and we'll just do the rest of the bill today?
I think we can do a floor amendment, if that would be fine.
I have a question, I have a question, Madam Chair. There was another issue, maybe, maybe you've addressed it, I'm not sure. It was under B, there was a change of language requested. I think it applies to numbers two and three, Chief.
Yes, ma'am. I thought, consistent with what I think annual reports are being done, and it's not uncommon, in fact, it's very common to put down the number of disciplinary actions that HR Department handled during a certain year. I think that's a better statement to make, because it's more consistent with what other organizations doing. Quite frankly, that's not what we were going to do with the annual report. But I'll go back to this, this is another component. If what you're asking for is what you want, we'll do it.
Yeah, I still think we want to be, try to capture as much information as possible, so that way, we have a clear understanding on it. So, I'm going to push to, we should report out on those things that we're doing separately, what I'm hoping to, because when we just have full information, we don't have to.
So, question, just so, if I may ask, so we're, so we're replacing the word conducted with the word attended with regard to community-based town hall meetings? And is that it?
Yes, because it looks like they're, they're wanting to do it. We want the information, and so, they're willing to do it, I think we just keep it as it.
Okay, so that's the one amendment. That would come on in second, Reader?
Fine, Nancy.
Ma'am? Can I, I'm sorry, can I add one more thing to it that was, I really just got this most yesterday and went through it really quickly, all, I mean, all the information. So, I mean, even my staff, they're shooting me things that I wanted, that I should bring to your attention. So, is it okay that I point out one more issue?
Yes.
And this actually comes from, comes from our HR Department, from Brandy Richmond, our HR Department. And she's saying, to her knowledge, there is no citizen contact recruitment list. However, there is a job interest list under DHR's purview that doesn't necessarily list addresses. The only information interest parties have to include is an email address. All of this information needs to be confirmed by DHR at a minimum. Okay, so that goes back to number two under A, I think. Well, no, not number two, I'm sorry, I saw it a moment ago.
It's B6.
B6, thank you. I had somebody stick their head and make sure they corrected me. B6, thank you. So.
So, if you get the, if you just get the information from HR, though, you will be able to get, because we're just looking for the number. So, you're saying you can still get it, it's just that it would be a step, you would have to wait on HR instead of having the information yourself?
Well, no, there's no citizen contact list. I mean, there's no, there's no list like that. There's a citizen contact recruitment list, but it's based on email addresses. And I don't know if that, and it doesn't, it doesn't say where they're at. So, if your focus is trying to, you know, trying to find out where they're at, if they're citizens, it would be difficult to do that, a little bit more difficult to do that. So, I don't know if DHR is on the line, is participating right now. I don't know if they'd have that information.
I have a question about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, did your HR person give you a substitute list that is more informative? Did I hear you name a list?
You know, ma'am, what was referred to me, what was directed to me to look at, is that we need to confirm with DHR if they actually have the addresses of the people, and we could count how many people that are citizens in the city. What we wind up getting is email addresses. Because on our site, when we normally tell people we're not testing, when all we're doing is recruiting, we tell people to go to DHR's site and put in their email address as an email of interest.
And we would have that number, we may not call it that, we may not call it that, but at least we have, we would have those emails. So, that means we would have a number, we would be able to count the number.
Okay.
I guess it's just, that's what we refer to, you can, I guess, call it anything.
Okay.
I don't, I just, what we want is the number, to see whether we have 100, or are we only going off the 10 email?
Okay, so what I'll, what I'll do is I'll, you know, I don't know if it affects today at all, but I'll make sure I reach out to DHR and make sure that they have that, and I'm certain that they have a number of interested. But I'll go back to the fact that they wouldn't, I don't think they'd know, when they get this interest list, that they'd know where they live at. So, if you're also looking for a citizen list, I don't think that's going to happen easily. Yeah, and I was just hit, and they said we could count the numbers.
Right, I think that, but I'd rather hear from them, because when I think of people applying, you know, it's with the zip code, we'll be able to determine.
Yeah, but, but when we get, when we're getting an interest group throughout, throughout the year, we don't necessarily get their addresses, we get emailed. I mean, they, they email in, they, at least they get on the list, sign up to be, to be informed when the testing process and their application process begins. And what we only have right then is an email address, if I'm correct.
Okay, I think that's still fine, like we'll just, to me, I feel like it's just taking the, that whatever we have at the, at the end of the year, that's fine.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I don't want to complicate it, because I just think we're missing the words of the content recruitment. So, whatever that ball, that they go off of, HR.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Question, may I, Madam Chair? I think what we're trying to determine here is, when you say citizens who have added their names to the list, these are people who are interested in being recruited and trained, correct? And we would like to know, like, what, what part of that list is city residents? I think that's what we need to know.
The interest list. Sorry, ma'am.
Am I correct?
Yes, yes, that's the intent, yes.
So, I mean, can't we just ask, can you change that list so that addresses are required?
When we, the initial interest, the people that were outreach and touching, we don't necessarily get that group, but once we start doing the application process, we get more information about that. And in fact, they sent me what it looks like, and all we get is their first name, last name, and email address when we do initial contact through the website. So, we wouldn't know if they're citizens. What we would know if they're citizens is if they decide to move forward to apply for the job. And that's when we start, start getting more specific data on that.
And that's why I think, that's why I'm like, I think that's okay, because it's a yearly report, so you'll still have a number at the end. I think.
Yes, ma'am, but we won't have a number every time that refers to, whether they're citizens, because we don't, we, okay, my guys' application process is 2015, right? So, 2016, 2017, 2018, until 2019, we started working it back up. People going to DHR and putting their name, their last, their first name, last name, the email address, so we had a collection of people. And then, those are the group that may have applied, then I could tell you who was in the city. Yeah, because we don't.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Henry.
Well, my first question was, was Councilwoman Clark done with her question?
So, I am, it's just that I'm trying to see whether the Fire Department could ask for addresses on this interest list.
Okay.
That's all.
And I think, and that ties into the question I was going to ask, and I'm sorry, I should already know the answer to this, but do you already have, as part of your selection process, any kind of waiting or benefit if you're a city resident?
You get additional points.
Okay.
In the process, but that's the testing process, so.
That's fine, as long as that's already, as, as long as that's already part of your protocol at any point, there would be no reason why, at the very opening stage, just when you're soliciting interest, you couldn't also have a, check this box if you're a city resident, and have a little note saying right there that in the testing phase down the line, there is a preference given to city residents. And if people check that box saying they're a city resident, then another box would pop up, allowing them to input their specific address so that it could be captured at the beginning of their interest, rather than waiting until later in the process.
Okay.
And that could, I would, I would expect that inside the Fire Department, that information could be useful to your marketing and recruitment people in terms of gauging at what point are you, do you need to be doing more outreach to city residents, because you're not getting them, or you are getting a huge percentage here, but then there's a drop-off before this next stage. So, that's where something has to be paid attention to. More, the chair has been making it pretty clear, more data is always better. The sooner we know more is always better. So, that's, I think that's the request. My only question, and this is probably more for the Law Department, is, is there any reason to write that into the law, or is this something that the Fire Department can just do as policy?
Can we just do this as policy? Is this something you've been doing your end with?
Sorry, I don't know, I haven't researched it. I mean, what comes to mind in my instance is, you know, we have contracts that talk about, you know, labor and recruiting for the unions, so I would have to go back and get with our labor people, just to be sure that that was fine.
Yeah, and I don't.
Can you get back with us before Monday, so we'll know?
I don't know how long it would take, but I can look into it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And I wouldn't want to speak for DHR and say what their ramifications would be about that, that's all.
We'll wait to hear back from Hillary, and it's in reference to it, but it looks like this is a small piece, so we still will be able to move on.
But I would like to point out only one, one quick thing, that let's be conscious of the fact that this is a data point that could be easily inflated, meaning that if people who apply for jobs assume that we're going to focus on the city, they're going to hit city every time they put in on this, because it's not showing, it's not a requirement showing where they are. And there's so many conspiracy theories that go on consistently, that you'll have, I would assume that we'd have just about everybody hit city if we put, if we put a data point on that, that says name, first name, last name, email address, city resident or not. I'm just, or, you know, I'm just assuming that people would do that. I want to clarify how that thing.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Just ask for addresses, don't say anything. Just, when you're asking for email, create this list, call it this, and ask for an address. That solves this problem, and we don't have to amend this part of the law, but somebody coming along, you know, in 10 years from now, that's trying to follow up on this, I don't want them saying, well, wait a minute, they don't even have addresses. That's the problem. Can we just ask that this list of people showing interest also provide their address? You don't have to tell them anything about benefits, or just, just ask for an address. Is that possible?
Madam Chair, can I, can I, can I make a clarification?
Yeah.
I'm not trying, I've done that too, ma'am. I've done that too, Councilwoman, but I think my perspective is, we, I can, I can, I can reach out to DHR and see if they can put a box into it that people click, and when they, when they're, when they're sending in for interest, if they're in the city. But I will, I will take, but I think it's going to be the most accurate, when people apply. If we can pull the data from when they apply, that's, that's going to be much, much more accurate, because at that point, they've got to show something, like a bill or something, that they're in the city. They got to show something, so it's going to be much more accurate. But I, I, we move forward and ask DHR for that information. I mean, see if they can, see if they can add a, an additional checkbox to it about city residents or not. I don't mind doing, but I just want, I think it's fair for you to know what, and I think it can be used. That's all.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. As long as we get the information, as long as it's by the time the report out is, we can work that out. But thanks for asking, and I appreciate it. I'll move on to my two amendments, and those were sent out. And the reason we had those, and I think it's important that we know how many, what the numbers of people participating, if we don't have the number, we might not have a problem further down the line, but we want to kind of make sure that there is a match to what we see what's going on in the number of people that are applying. The other are participating in the promotional process. And then, the number two area was to make sure also that the two actually, that is assigned, and we know like each step of the way, that that's also a lining up, so we can catch any issues that we have. So, as we move on to a new process, we're, we know about it, we're aware of it, and we're getting accurate information, so we can maneuver from what we have. And we don't have to wait two years to find out, or three years, but we know about it right away as a council. So, those are the two reasons for my amendment. So, I'm going to motion to move these amendments. Oh, wait, we have, I'm sorry, I always forget about the motions here on the virtual call. If anybody wants to use the raise hand function? Sure, I've already seen both down, would you like to say anything? There's one person on the phone, do my two, anything he made you live, so you just heard. The two rings, the two. Okay, nothing from that caller. Okay, nothing from that caller. All right, so we're going to move right ahead.
Chairwoman, I just want to say, finance, we didn't report out yet. Just want to say that we do not oppose the legislation and stand by our report.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I thought you did. Sorry.
Madam Chair? I didn't, I really didn't get a chance to, I read your amendment. A1 is basically already in this, but amendment D, I mean, the D, I don't have a copy of that. Just, I'd like to get a copy of it. That's all.
We'll send you the copy. We'll get that to you. All right, so I'm moving these two amendments as a package. And I think MPC is a second.
Second.
Perfect. I'm a yes. Robert Stokes is absolutely. Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray is a yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is a yes. And Councilwoman Bill Henry?
Yes.
So the amendments, the amendments package, we're now going to go to the bill. And I'm going to, that will be the bill amendments. I'm a, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Snead is a yes. Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilwoman Frank?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilwoman is a yes. And Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is a yes. And Councilman Robert Rice here is absolutely. So this bill actually, the point, it will go to the next. We'll also have our floor amendments ready by then as well. So thank you all for your time and have a good rest of your day.
Thanks.
Thank you.